2023. And with that, we have a couple of new council members. We have councilperson Sinta Daniels and then councilperson Krista Keith. Krista Keith.
How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for running. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Roll call. Aquila?
Here.
Battle?
Here.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Here.
Eaton?
Here.
Eaton? Present.
Ronnie?
Here.
Thank you.
Warrant payable. May I have a motion to?
I would approve warrant payable on the amount of $399,595 in the future.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a happy note that we, a little bit of this money, not a whole lot, is for purchasing the TechMyGov system. And so we have an added way to communicate with the public for all kinds of things, including emergencies and also just for regular ease of access to city information. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions about warrant payable or discussion? Then we have a local.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So first order of business is nominating council president, nominating and electing a council president. Can I get, may I have, anyone have a nomination?
So I'd like to nominate Kelly Eaton.
Second.
Roll call.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. You're doing a great job.
You're welcome.
Next up is to appoint council members to standing committees. I don't know if you recall, but our standing committees, we just started them up again this year and it was roughly, they've been in existence for roughly six months and we're starting to get some momentum out of them. And it's going to be a good device to get our new council people up to speed because we have these committees. And so we're going to stick pretty much with the same committee members. And that would be with the following for the admin committee. It would be Jen Battle, Kristen Keith, and Jody Ronnie. And then on public works, it will be Terry Durbin, Sinta Daniels, sorry, Jody Ronnie. And then planning and land use will be Kristen Keith, Kelly Eaton, and Jen Battle. And finally, on public health and safety, it'll be Kelly Eaton, Sinta Daniels, and Terry Durbin. And we'll see how it goes and we'll see what kind of issues arise and what kind of complicating factors there are. If we need to rearrange those, then we will. Then we're going to make some appointments. The sustainability board and the parks board aren't listed, but we'll go ahead and appoint those if anybody has any objections at the next meeting, then, you know, we can talk about that. But we're going to go ahead and appoint Corey Thompson and Deb Muth to the sustainability And then for the parks board was Sarah Thorson, Rob Fordall, Beth Graham, and Doug Reynolds.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat the sustainability again?
Corey Thompson and Deb Muth. And they are reappointing those, Deb Muth.
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 Yep. Thanks.
And who is the park board again?
Sarah Thorson.
Rod and Beth and who's the board? Doug Reynolds.
Doug Reynolds. Is that Kelly? No. He's in.
And then on the cemetery board, we'll reappoint Mike Nordstrom. For the airport board, Steve Smith has agreed to continue. And we're going to appoint Beau Ewell for the open seat vacated by Jerry Kirpin.
Erin.
Kathleen De La Honte has agreed to continue serving on the ambulance district board. And I believe that's it for a while. If we missed any, we'll pick them up next time. But I want to thank everybody who has served, who has no longer serving. And I'd like to thank everybody who stepped up to serve because there's people like you that keep our community going. So thank you. Next up is public comments. If anybody would like to make a public comment about anything on the agenda or anything not on the agenda, then please come up to this podium and say what you want to say, but keep it reasonable and civil and don't go past three minutes. State your name and where you live so that, you know, we know you're not like from Kansas. Not that they.
There's nothing.
We just like to know from what, you know, why you're contributing. And so.
There's some people from Kansas. They're lovely. They're lovely.
If anybody would like to come to the podium, please do that now.
Hi, my name is Kate Belinda. I actually live outside of city limits, but I'm an educator at Red Lodge High School. I teach environmental science, earth science, and advisor to the Green Team and a board member of Recycle Red Lodge. I just want to say I'm really thankful that the board is analyzing taking back the recycling center. I think it's really important for municipalities to take ownership of the waste that their community produces. When China stopped taking a large amount of our recycling, the United States was in rear. And that was one of the reasons why the recycling center shut down. I feel like as always, Red Lodge residents stepped up and filled that void and came together and formed a nonprofit. However, I do believe it is time for the city of Red Lodge to take ownership of Red Lodge's waste back and take the recycling center back under the city of Red Lodge.
Sherri Weimar, Red Lodge Area Chamber. I have the happy task of sharing our new brochure called Happy Trail. We were in desperate need for a piece like this last summer. The whole state kind of scrambled to put something together. It's intended to educate our visitors. They don't know how to ask on their hair. They don't know how to throw garbage on our trail. They don't know they're supposed to not be rude to our service industry. They need to be patient and respect our area. So we came up with this brochure. And with that said, I wanted it to have a welcoming and a happy note to it so they read it. And then rather than pick it up and throw it away, we incorporated our trail in it. And first question I get asked by everybody that walks in the chambers, do you have a city map? So this might make them actually take it with them and use it. It's cleverly done. There's things on the back like, your car is awesome, but please don't create any parking space. So we tried to make it fun. So these are for everybody. It's intended to be at all the lodging facilities to help remind our guests to pipe down when you're in neighborhoods, you know, think about what you're doing and how you're acting. Would you like a coffee? May I distribute? What's your passing about for you?
You've got fans already.
Yeah, this is great.
And that's it. Call me if you need any. I'll come running with them or make sure you get them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Jason Breed and I live at 209 North Worth here in Red Lodge. First of all, congratulations to those of you who are taking the first council meeting. I'm sure it's going to be fun. Fun trip. I don't want to waste your time, so I want to make sure that I'm not covering territory you've already covered. Are you in touch with the Montana League of Towns and Cities on the governor's task force recommendations on housing?
We get a lot of emails and I don't know if that's exactly.
So I might want to then just go ahead. Can I hand this out to you guys? We're going to get this to you faster. And we don't have to go over it because we don't have time, but I just, I haven't even followed this, that there are 23 bills today on changing Montana's housing laws. And one of the major focuses, and I've been in touch with some of the advocates for this, have to do with preempting local land use and building policies. And they're working under a theory that this is the problem related to affordable housing. And so essentially, the legislature is considering telling cities and towns that they can manage their own land use themselves. Your director, your executive director of the League of Towns and Cities, she's in the press talking about, you know, the subsidies that are, there's a long list of things that you can look at. And this is all on the web and it's listed at the bottom and how you can find this. Everybody, I'm sure, will appreciate the funds that they're considering pushing this direction, but it really is taking local control of what your town looks like and how your town develops out of your hands. The bill drafts are general right now. I've looked today, none are, there's no language for any of them yet. The folks that, if you look at the notes of the meetings, they're pretty aggressive. And from, you know, my perspective, we live and die by our authentic authenticity here in town, our ability to continue to shape the North Corridor, make sure that the type of development that occurs is consistent with as much as possible with the history of the town because that's what we live and die on. So that's all I've got for you. There's a list on the back to give you some broad categories. Some may be troubling, some may have appeal. I would, the last thing I'd leave you with is it's the governor's priority. There are at least 23 bill drafts. Bills were introduced on Tuesday. This session's going to move much more quickly than sessions in the past. Typically, you have a couple of weeks before things get going. So I would encourage you to quickly reach out to your executive director and coordinate with them on this issue. So I've got for you.
No, thank you very much for your attention. All right, are there any more public comments? All right, move on. We don't have any old business. New year, all new business. First up is recycling options. So this has taken several forms over the last week and over the last year. The way I see it, we have two options. Should we take it back or we don't take it back? If there's any other options out there, it's, you know, third party, like another nonprofit entity or another for-profit entity, you know, that's something that they will come up with and bring to the city. But, you know, the city doesn't really have, you know, the authority to go out and seek a replacement for an existing nonprofit. So we, you know, basically council's job is to review the evidence and either take it back or choose not to take it back. And so we had an ordinance that passed the first reading and then it failed the second reading because there was an absent council person. We'll have a little bit of a discussion for what our options are for the future and what the council would like to do. But, you know, it's not a real complicated issue and it doesn't need to be a more complicated issue. So we want to remain within our scope. And to that order, Terry Durbin has spent some time creating a presentation that she would like to make and then we'll have a little bit of a discussion. So Terry, would you like to make your presentation?
Sure, thanks. And then we'll have Lonnie over at the controls. So this is just going to be one of the things I try to do in this group to add some value is when we have topics that are important for our citizens and for the city council to consider, is to go back and make sure we've done our due diligence and gathered information, done some research, and look at the totality of what we're looking at so we can put everything kind of in perspective. So that's kind of the goal today. So I'm representing, I presenting, but this is also the hard work done by Jody and by Pete Crutelli, who was our council person. So I want to make sure that they get credit as well. Let's first start here with, go past one. Red Lodge Recycling, so this is what we cover tonight, Resolution Number 3600, the question which we believe is a question for city council to address on the review of the due diligence package, options for recycling going forward, and then our recommendations and our recommendations for next steps. Next one. And so Recycling Red Lodge is closing as of July 1st, 2023. It's currently a membership program that's successfully been in operation since 2018. Recycle Red Lodge gave us a presentation last March when Gina announced that she's stepping down from running the center July 1st, 2023. And so Resolution 3600 was drafted and passed by the city council last April. And so just to go to this, the city of Red Lodge shall hereafter conduct its due diligence to determine if it's in the best interest of the city to assume supervision and control over the recycling operations in town. In doing so, the city shall review the logistics of supervising and operating the recycling program. Okay, next slide. Okay, so, you know, kind of the question we'd like the city councils to consider is, is the city committed to ensuring recycling is available to citizens of Red Lodge? And if so, you know, what are the trade-offs, right? And what is it going to be the cost to the city and the taxpayers? So the first question you say is, why does the community of Red Lodge recycle? So the goal has been always to reduce our carbon footprint. Recycle Red Lodge diverts their estimated 800,000 pounds of solid waste from the landfill annually. And there's a document that you can get online that's called the Red Lodge Energy Conservation Plan, and it was unanimously adopted by Resolution in 2018 by the city council. So if you're not familiar with this document, you know, I encourage you to review it. It can be found on the city website. And in it, it says, the goal of solid waste recycling and compost strategies is to divert as much waste from the landfill as possible and to extend these actions into the community. They point out that success involves collaboration between the city and local businesses and organizations and that these collaborative efforts will help set Red Lodge apart as a sustainability-minded town and will encourage our tourists and visitors to be aware of their impact while in and around Red Lodge. So that's why that was passed. So after reviewing the due diligence information packet, there'll be several options to consider long-term and will be presented for recycling going forward in Red Lodge. Next slide. Okay, so the due diligence, the public works committee is submitting a due diligence packet we prepared on Recycle Red Lodge. And so if you look at where I have contents, we've gathered as much information as we can to date for people to review. And I would say of note in there, there is an, and it was also included in the agenda packet for people to look at, was the updated draft budget. And then, of course, that went out on Friday and we were this morning making last tweaks. So everybody should at least have a copy. And I did email each of the council people one as well with some of the updates. And that was the hard work at the last minute that Jen Battles, Jody Ronnie, and Lonnie did. So that's one thing I want to point out. And then the other thing, you'll see a document that has kind of a summary of information that we've kind of been gathering and documenting, and then the documents that we received from Recycle Red Lodge. And so the items that we considered unknown or potential risks are noted in red. So that's how you kind of determine that. And then we strongly feel that presenting this information to the city council and the public is a critical component to making an informed decision for our community. And then I also just wanted to take this opportunity to tell Jen, Lonnie, and Teresa Whistler, who was on council, to thank them for all the effort they put into addressing solid waste management to date. And everything that we're presenting is building on the stuff that you guys did. So thank you very much. And then in addition, I wanted to thank Gina, she's out there, and Noel for their work in providing all this information to us. And they've kind of gone through this a couple of times, so they've been very patient with bringing a lot more people up to date as we've asked. So we appreciate that. And then, of course, I was also on the recycling board, as were some other people here on council, and we want to say how much we appreciate the work that Gina, the board, the staff, and all the volunteers and people that are supportive of recycling have done to date. That's been noted. So, okay, next slide. So we're not going to, well, now we're going to cover the options that the community has available going forward as we look at recycling in Red Lodge. So one is recycling managed and operated by the city of Red Lodge, which we're addressing, a nonprofit organization or a private recycling entity. And as we noted, Red Lodge Recycling is going to be closing on July 1st. And these different options were presented in that document I talked about earlier. That's why I wanted to go back to them since that was accepted by the city council. So if we go to the next slide. So this is the option that the city managed and operates it. And so we're really fortunate on public works to have Jody Ronnie, who also, I guess, you know, is part of the admin finance group or committee. And so Jody's been working on the budget, and so I thought she could present the information she thinks pertinent on the budget that we panned it out.
Okay. Well, what Lonnie and Jen and I did, we updated the budget to, taking into account that anyone who works for the city of Red Lodge is typically a union employee and they have a set salary depending on what their grade is. And so that was updated. Also, we corrected the burdened amount for those salaries because they were proportionally changing or not changing when we increased the amount of hours. So on this new budget, those are right. If they get 30 hours in for the recycling supervisor and, you know, 18 hours for the gatekeeper and 10 hours of admin. Just note that going forward, number one, these are all based on this year's salary. There is nothing that typically, you know, there may be a cost of living increase involved in this, so this could go up and it probably will go up. And also, when the city takes it over, you know, it'll be under part of public work. It will be in Jim's purview at that time to determine the actual days that it's open and the number of hours people will be getting. So this budget right now is basically based on if the city took it over today and we changed nothing. So and so just be aware moving forward that it's a fluid budget that is probably going to change if the city does take it over. So we just want to make that comment. Admin and finance, Jen and I and now Chris, if the city does decide that they want to move forward with taking it back, we will be working with Lonnie to firm up a budget as of July 1st for the recycling center, you know, as part of the new budget.
You want to kid any of them? Go ahead. So and a couple of other things that we just kind of wanted to point out was, you know, the other thing we have to do is right now about 20% of the people, a little under 20% are in Red Lodge, are actually recycling.
Is that members?
Yeah, members. So we figured the members versus the total number of people that we want to charge for or we want to assess a tax for recycling.
The number of people that just come up and pay a fee.
A drop-off fee, yeah. We do have drop-off fees in the budget for income. Yeah.
But we don't know, you didn't have a solid number it looks like.
No, well, on the last page, the very last page.
The used drop fee?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
This one. So one thing that, and that was information actually we got from Gina, was that there was kind of a steady stream of residential people coming in doing one-use fees, but for commercial, it was really only when we kind of had, like with the flood, a bunch of plastic bottles came in. But that wasn't something we got on a regular basis. So those were all, again, and I only put that in because there's estimates, there wasn't documentation showing exactly how many. So again, we may want to track that up or down, you know, if people are going to start paying for recycling. Maybe we'll have more interest either in people dropping off recycling or doing one-time use. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that there, the unknown risks are, again, you know, recyclables are a commodity, you know? And so it goes up and down and it fluctuates quite a bit. So that's going to be really hard to determine what that's going to be. And then also the fuel costs, which have been kind of out of control at points. So those are things that we're going to have to make, that finance committee's going to have to make estimates, but again, knowing that those are things that we don't have a lot of control over. And I did talk to Gina on several occasions and she said that, I asked her about, is Recycle Red Lodge profitable? And she said, no. She said, at best, it's break even. So we should keep that in mind. And again, they have different, you know, it's always a little bit more expensive to run up with the city. And then the last thing I wanted city council members just to keep in mind that if we do this budget, rejected budget, and the cost exceeds the revenues, what are the city's options to fund and deficit? Yeah, that's probably enough for now.
I have a question.
Sure.
So on the first page of the budget, under recycling costs, the first line item, composting for the bucket, I don't think that's, I don't think that's being offered anymore.
Right, yeah. And actually, that's a good point. I knew that and we didn't take it off. But the thing is, I have been kind of doing a little bit of background check and we may have an option for that as well, so.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Right now. And they'll have the spreadsheet and, you know, we can always ask questions later, but we just wanted to give people that just to kind of look at. Let's see. The other thing is, we've talked about, oh, and I'd like Jim maybe, not to put you on the spot, to speak to this a bit, just so that people are clear, the contract is going to be expiring, what is it, two and a half years from now?
2025.
Okay. And so with the current contract, we are getting charged with.
By Republic.
Yes, I'm sorry, with Republic by.
For trash.
Right, for a can per resident. So if recycling did go away, our costs wouldn't go up because we're adding more trash. We would still be, you know, everybody would still have one trash can that they would be responsible for. So it's not like they do it by weight. So I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if there's any questions around that.
That's true.
Okay, and let's see. I think that's about it for that budget for now. And then the issue with the nonprofit organizations, the model has been that the city would continue to, if for some reason in the future, a nonprofit or this, somebody wanted to take over what's in existence now, the city would continue to rent the recycling center in its fenced area for a nominal fee. And, let's see here, and then they have a membership program which has been working really well. There are some potential partners that I, again, was reading that document that we did a couple of years ago, and some of these were identified on there so that I thought I'd bring them up again for a long-term solution for this. I've already talked to Bill Bullock, one of our county commissioners, and at this time it just doesn't fit because of the, you know, the volatility of the market of recyclables. So they're not really interested at this particular point. And so the other thing I wanted to point out is that this option requires additional time and effort to explore as part of a long-term plan. But I did want people to at least have it on their radar.
But none of these are really viable options at this point, are they?
Well, not for today because we don't have any information.
But I mean, my understanding is that none of these, these have been, these are not options.
I, you know, I don't know.
The city doesn't have a role in negotiating this.
No, but I, well, this is the way I kind of look at it. You know, we don't have a role in that. I reached out to everybody here because as a community, if we determine it's too expensive for the city, I'd still like to see if there's other options to keep recycling going because I think it's important. So it was just kind of, you know.
Did you reach out to these?
Yes, I did.
And are any of them interested?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It requires a lot of time and effort. I contacted them twice. This was over the holiday season. I didn't expect to get a lot of, you know, a lot of input. If I get any, I will certainly share it, but to date, no. And so then next, oh, you already had me good. So the next one would be the private recycling entity. And again, the city continues to rent the recycling center in the fenced area for a nominal fee, and an independent group provides a local recycling program. And so the ones that we listed on here were Earth First, and I, Jim and I have both been trying to get a hold of them and we haven't yet because they do have a, you know, facility up there where they're doing actually curbside pickup for buildings. Republic Services, and then I put on here Others for Profit. And so a couple of things to think about is, are there other entrepreneurs, you know, and again, are there other entrepreneurs in towns that would be interested? You know, they're. You know, there could be a hybrid model to supplement the city's recycling facility. Someone that was an entrepreneur or volunteers may be willing to provide curb site pickup to businesses or residents for a monthly fee. Gina had mentioned to me too, that I wanted to throw up there, that she has a donor that's willing to donate $4,000 annually to subsidize low income residents. And then I I just kind of feel like we need to continue to think out of the box and consider how we can make recycling a viable option for our community. And then again, these options require additional time and effort to explore as part of a long term solution. The next one. And so I just wanted to again revisit the question for City Council. And, you know, is the city going to be committed to ensure recycling is available to the citizens of Red Lodge? And again, if so, at what cost to the city and taxpayers? So a couple of considerations as we look at this, you know. It is, you know, it's an added burden to the city resources. The admin resources continue to be tapped for project work. The Public Works Department is always super busy. And now they've got the flood disaster they're still dealing with. So that's yet one more thing to put on their plate. I think the other thing to look at is, again, is the city able to financially subsidize recycling if needed? And so, you know, we just have to sit plan in advance if we go down that path, how we're going to address that. And then the third thing we'd we'd like to consider is, you know, we hear, at least this last year, we've heard talk of additional taxes or tax assessments that might be considered in 2023 to supplement the budget. And so the question is, where is recycling in that priority if we start going to the taxpayers to, you know, collect more taxes? So it's it's a question. And so, you know, where is recycling in that priority? And so I think, you know, there's, there's been a couple of suggestions of, how can we make sure that everybody in the community that's going to get this assessment tax is aware so they can voice their concerns? One of the suggestions was, you know, maybe this is important enough to to go for a vote. You know, I don't know, but I'd just like the city council members to think about all of these and decide what's the best, the best way for us to proceed. So the next one, please. So, and these are are the Public Works Group, our committee's next steps and recommendations for the council to consider. And so, and and actually, you know, Jody and Jen have talked about this and that's two of the members, so that's good. We were thinking that the Admin and Finance Committee proposes proposes a budget and funding mechanism based on this due diligence packet and report that we provided for the fees and funding mechanism and determine the financial burden thresholds for operation of this facility. And then the other thing is, let's see, I, you know, the budget, it will take time, but we're looking at it as a budget won't be started from scratch. Jen did a really good job upfront. We amended that. And since it's a draft budget, uh, let's see, they can review the budget and make any modifications if needed based on current information provided. And then again, they can also hopefully determine what the financial burden threshold would be. And so we feel by doing this, this will ensure the city council understands what the trade offs are as far as funding before they vote. And then the next thing would be recycling ordinance as a resolution is drafted. And I don't know which way makes the most sense. So we had talked about, and we brought this up last year when we were having this discussion about recycling, that considering that the city would operate the recycling facility for a trial period, maybe of one or two years, it could be renewed, and then specify an early exit clause based on the financial burden threshold determined by the Admin and Finance Committee. And we think that that is a a a way for us to kind of reach a happy medium between each the people that want it and the people that don't want it. So that might be a good way to approach this, so that it's a win win. And then in parallel, we talked about a request for Red Lodge, for the Red Lodge Sustainability Board to explore nonprofit and or pro for profit partners to sustain recycle, Red Lodge recycling long term. The last slide. I'm already suggesting to maybe give them something that that has some teeth they can work on this year. And so we'd like to see, I don't know what their priorities are. I'll be the first one to say that. But, you know, maybe we could request request prioritizing investigation of long term waste removal options via transfer, transfer station systems, local landfills, or different methods of collection. And maybe getting the, you know, I know the the green team or the entrepreneurial club that they have at the high school, maybe they could get together and do some sort of project. So that is kind of what we came up with. So that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Terry. So maybe we can go round robin and leave the new people at the end. And if you guys don't want to come, it, you don't have to. But I would like to hear from the rest of the council on whatever their thoughts are. We've kind of been around the block with recycling for quite a while. So, um, in in my opinion, you know, I think we need to, if anybody has it, if anybody has ordinance or a resolution, bring it, bring it next time. But we need to put this to bed. We need to either move forward or or stop because we we have other things we're working on. And then, so I would like to hear from, we just heard from Terry and we're going to skip Chris. And we're going to go right to Jody.
Okay. I I guess, um, after discussing things with Jen and Monty this morning, I mean, I'm more than willing to move forward with helping put this budget together to see where we actually would be at, you know, with input from Jim on the number of hours and things like that. I might absolutely support Red Lodge having recycling programs. It's just like Terry said. I I think there's a a point where our citizens will give us some pushback if it's really expensive. You know, there, we have a lot of people that already complain about property taxes, even though most of it isn't the city. The city's not getting most of it. So I just think we really need the conscientious of of that. And then, you know, the different hats that the city of Red Lodge will be asking moving forward.
I don't have too much to add. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of obviously having the Admin and Finance Committee put together a budget that we can review. I think that's an important thing to do. And I'm interested to see what that, you know, how that all shakes out. I do agree with the mayor that I think we do need to figure out, you know, not trying to rush it along, but I do think we need to figure out quickly like what, if we're doing this or not, because July 1st is coming quickly. And and things will need to be put in place if we do vote to take it back for, you know, a trial period or whatever period. There will need to be significant time to, you know, make a warm handoff and have everyone trained and know what's going on down there. And, um, so I guess I I am interested to see what the Admin and Finance Committee comes up with. And I hope that we can, um, you know, keep the timeline in mind.
Yep. Jen?
I don't have too much more to add either. I would say, I think Admin Finance Committee is eager to get something in front of this council that has numbers attached to it. And I, um, I think it's, I think it's important not just to consider the fact that July 1st, recycle Red Lodge is dissolving, but also it's not the case that any recycling program pays for itself with its commodities. So it is a taxpayer burden. And I want to make sure that whatever we put forward, there's enough time for ample public input. And that takes time and that takes announcements in the mail and all kinds of things. And so I think I speak for Jody, myself anyway, that, um, you know, as Admin looks at what's next and what's coming, um, you know, putting forth a resolution and also a budget, we're going to keep that in mind because that needs, that all needs to happen also and and well. And I appreciate Terry's energy and effort. And I'm looking forward to putting this to bed as it were, one way or the other.
Thank you, Jen. And now.
You know, if you have anything to say. No, I've actually attended a few of the meetings for at least the last two months to kind of get a heads up on what has been on the agenda. I'm sure everyone else who has been partaking in these meetings is probably tired also of hearing about it. So I think putting it to bed would be great. I also feel like we are terms of the essence right now and we are down to, you know, July 1st is going to happen. So coming up with a budget is definitely the priority number one, just to see, I mean, even for a trial period, which seems to be the most viable course right now. For those who are against or for, that way we know where we stand. But yeah, I'm excited to see what it comes up with.
Kristen? I would also like to say thank you for doing all the due diligence. And, you know, I know Teresa put a lot of work into it before and so you guys have done a lot of work. I think, you know, for me, in a perfect world, we'd have curb side recycling. I'm a big fan of recycling. You know, at some point, we're going to run out of places to put our garbage. And I think garbage is also a taxpayer burden. What are we paying like $30 a month for that? For a can, 35? 45 in a month for households? So to me, you know, being able, like, if I didn't recycle, I would never be able to fit all my stuff in the garbage. And I'm not a big consumer, so I think it's important. I like the idea of the green team getting involved. And Terry, you mentioned a survey, you know, just getting it, kind of taking a temperature of people in our wards to see what they think. And maybe that's something the green team could do. I know the Short Term Rental Committee did a survey. They had like a thousand responses. We could set up something similar to that just to see what people think. You know, $6 a month. I know it's just one more thing that adds on, but that is like a small price to pay to me. But, um, and I was wondering, are there any grants available that the city could tap into to help? I mean, can the city get grants?
I haven't come across any grants.
The city can get grants, yeah. But I, I haven't come across anything that's that that they can recycle. Thank you, has some, but it would take research. I'm sure, okay. Anyway, I just think it would be a travesty to not have recycling in a town like Red Lodge. So I fully support moving forward and looking at this and seeing how we can make it work.
Well, I would like any proposed ordinances or resolutions for the next meeting. So if if anybody gets any, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to present whatever, whatever proposals you have as time goes on. But again, you know, we have other things coming up, the budget's coming up, and we have a lot of other projects. And so if, I mean, if, let's work with what we know. And and if you want to, if you want to have a hearing for any sort of a resolution, then then let me know and we'll have it at the next meeting. And if anybody has any more ideas, call my office, come by, visit me. And that goes for people in the audience, in your community. And, you know, if you have any ideas, if you want your, Jim?
If you'd just stop me and make a couple of statements on this. So in my position, been there 24 years. And when I first came to the city, we did have recycling under the city's deal along with Republic, which was at that time was a different company name. But anyway, I've been there with many communities throughout the state. Recycling is a very touchy deal. Like it's a commodity and it's either, you're not going to make any money. It's not a profitable deal. What I want to say, those of you who went through our budget the last several years that we, and those of you have been here and see, well, our budget is very tight. So if we're going to do this, the one important thing you have to make sure is that we fund this, where it doesn't put a burden on the city's budget because we can't afford any subsidy in any way to run this recycling. So it has to go out to the public. I think the public needs to know what you're going to be doing. They will be paying and it will have to be set in, I mean, it has to be set up. You have to do a resolution and pass a deal to whatever the monthly fee turns out or yearly fee turns out to every taxpayer. The whole city taxpayers are going to have to fund this and make sure that it's funded enough that we don't have any kind of loss in it because we don't, there is no extra money in our budget to subsidize anything. I mean, when we get done with our budget, and those of you who worked on it last year with us, we get to the bottom line, we're down to the minimum. We talked about it every year. We've done it every year. But at the end of the budget deal and we get, we finally pass a budget, what is the one thing we need? More revenue. There's many ways to go. We could do a a emergency deal. I mean, there's, we need more revenue, one way or the other. We can't take on another deal that the city costs without funding it completely because there is no extra money. And I'll guarantee you, one way or another, we need up the mills. We need to do something. The city needs more revenue. We've been working on the same mills forever. The city of Red Lodge has never upped the mills, ever. So the only thing that makes it grow, and it's we have more people, more houses, more. But I, I can tell you, when you get to the end of our budget every year, at the end of the deal, what's the deal? We need more revenue. We're going to take on this entity, which is a, I'm going to tell you, it's probably a $200,000 or $300,000 a year deal that we we need to fund to the taxpayer. And they need to know that that's how it's going to be funded because there is no extra money in the budget to make this happen. So when you do this, the resolution will have to include some type of a tax deal or a a monthly charge or whatever you're going to do to fund it. You really need to make sure it's funded. And these guys putting a budget together, I can't see it happening without at least two full time employees down there, a manager and another person working because it just doesn't just happen on its own and it takes a lot of hours and time. And that when the city takes over, there's a lot of other things, liabilities and stuff that come into account for what we're running down there. So I just wanted to make sure as you do this, remember, the funding is the important part of this because there is no extra money to subsidize this in any way, shape or form in the budget.
Thank you, Jim. I do, I do always want to be respectful. All right. Are we done with that? Okay. Next thing up is, uh, your question for use of city owned land permit, closed milkshake filling. It's in July and it would be to close 14th Street. So may I have a motion?
13th Street.
13?
That's a misprint.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
May I have a motion?
I move to approve.
There's a second, second, thank you. Discussion.
I just have one question. So the, uh, the certificate for insurance, um, we got that today, right? Is it at, did I miss it? Is it at one mill or two mill?
Did you get my response?
But it's, but if there's alcohol, right? So shouldn't it be two regardless?
Yeah.
So I, I think the, I think the current, I think the insurance document we were provided will need to be updated. And I would approve it with that update.
Yeah.
But I, I think, I think as, as.
If you're serving alcohol, you need two million for your liability.
And I'm sure they'll get it to us, but.
Right. That is, uh, yeah, we, it's been a million dollar policy is what we've had in the past. I mean, most policies that you get for insurance for any of the bars are, I mean, are a million dollar policy. For a special event, I can talk to Cory, my guy, and see what he says. But that's what it's been, a million in the past, so.
Don't our current requirements stay two million for?
It, it, it does. I think it just got, I think it just split five before. The current requirement value is $2 million if you're serving alcohol.
All right, any more comments or questions?
So, sorry, just I want to be clear. Can we move to, can I move to approve with the amendment that we get an updated insurance document with two million coverage?
And so.
Second amendment.
Do you want to vote on the motion?
The amended motion.
Or are we going to wait till the end to vote on the amended motion? Or are we going to wait till the end to vote on the amended motion? Let's go on the amendment. Roll call on the amendment. Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Can I clarify? There's this amendment with the revised.
Yes.
Yes. Then I voted yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
All right. Now, does anybody have any further comments? Any issue with this request?
This is for Friday and Saturday night, correct?
Last call for further comments or questions. All right, roll call. Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. One of the things that has been mentioned in the city hall is your willingness to always address issues. Much appreciated.
Thank you guys. I, first, a lot easier, everybody works hand in hand, who does, so.
Hard to throw a good party. All right. Next up is. Resolution 3617, amending the city's council rules and procedures. Do I have a motion?
I know that there's, I spoke with some council members today about some amendments. So I will move to approve it so we can open it up for discussion.
That's second. There's a second. All right. So I drafted this and I'll give you the preface for it. In the situation where council is split on an issue, the mayor votes to decide the tie. There's one way for a council member to prevent the mayor from deciding a tie, and that's to not attend the meeting. If a councilperson misses a vote, it would be three in favor and two against. Under state statutes, a 3-2 vote would pass, but because our charter requires four votes for an item to pass, it fails. This happened in November with the recycling vote. It doesn't matter that it's the recycling vote because it could be with any vote. Council spent nearly a year on the issue and it passed on the first reading. Ordinances require two affirmative votes. On the second vote, one councilperson was not present. Had a motion been made to postpone the vote, there's a good chance the motion two would have failed because it would have not had four votes. We are here because we were elected to vote, representing the people who elected us. If we do not require council people to vote, we're not serving the people of Red Lodge. This amendment would allow the mayor to ensure that issues are decided by voting and not by staying home. It doesn't give the mayor any sort of advantage on any issue. And as always, it's up to the council to vote on this. So it's up to you, whatever you feel like you'd like to do with it. I have drafted this and I have been in touch with Jen. This is something that our charter requires. And it's beyond what the state requires. But it brings us to this gap where an issue that is split can be sabotaged by someone who's really not showing up. And I am telling you, you can take care of it how you like, but it will come up again. So that was my effort at fixing a fault. So with that, we can discuss it and vote it up again.
I was the councilperson that was not here in November and it's because I was ex- it was not because, to clarify, it was not because I did not want to vote on the issue. So, and we've had other cases where we did not have, for example, the farmer's market. We did not have four votes to pass because we had two councilpeople out that time and Jen had to recuse herself. So we would have only had three yes votes and it would have been unanimous. And at that time, all we did was a member of council moved to move it to the next meeting. And it did pass. And I do feel that if that would have happened at the November meeting, I'd have to, a couple of the people who voted against it and they were willing to vote yes to move it to the next meeting, but it was never, there was never a motion made. And I do feel that we already do have that mechanism in place to table or defer an action on a motion and that it should be up to the council to do that, is my personal opinion. And we also, the mayor also has the ability right now to ask, to say at any time during the discussion that can I get a motion to defer this to the next meeting? That's already there. So I feel that this is the council's power that I feel that the council should retain.
But you haven't yet had an opportunity, correct?
We did with the farmer's market.
No, but your vote is not part because you were absent, so.
Right. It's not part of it because there was no motion ever made to defer it to the next meeting.
But there's no guarantee a motion would have given to the council.
Right. But I still feel it's up to the council at that point to, I don't think, personally, I don't feel that any councilperson would deliberately, maybe, you know, skip a meeting so that there, so it doesn't pass, you know, so that they break the tie. You know, that was not my intention of being absent at that meeting. I was coming back by 6 o'clock, so, but.
I don't think it's a personal thing, but it's a good example of, do you want that door open or do you not?
Just the way that it said, it makes it sound like I skipped the meeting because I didn't want it to pass. And that's not the case.
I would also like to see council retain its own self-governing powers. And as I look at resolution 3617, really what we're talking about is the addition of one sentence. In the event that a council member is absent, the mayor may postpone a hearing and/or vote until such time that all members are present. I don't support moving that power to the mayor. However, that's that I would support the following amendment that that sentence reads, in the event that a council member is absent, those members who are present may adopt a motion to postpone a vote until such time that all members are present and such a motion would require a simple majority to pass. And then that way, it requires just, you know, let's say, one member's absent. It would require three people instead of four. And but those powers would be retained with council and not with the mayor.
Dennison, would that go against the charter that requires four votes for any action, you know, offhand?
Mayor members of the city council. I don't know offhand, but I can look into it.
There are other places in the charter where a simple majority is allowed.
My understanding in the charter, it's only for ordinances and resolutions that require the four votes. It's our city rules and procedures that require four votes or yes votes on anything. So that would be, we should be, you know, I want Dennison to review that. But my understanding, it's just resolution and ordinances that require the four votes in our city charter.
Would you like to table it until Dennison is available to review?
I'm ready to vote.
What was it?
I said, I would be ready to vote. I, my feeling is quite frankly, if it's not broke, why fix it? And I feel we have a strong council, weak mayor, and I believe that we should be governing ourselves. And if people have bad behaviors, then they probably won't get voted in again, so.
You know, there's not, this isn't removing any power from council. This is only postponing a vote for council.
But we can already do that.
You can do that, but it, I mean, but this ensures council, this actually strengthens council because it ensures that people can vote on an issue instead of having sickness or. This ensures that each council member can vote, which I think is important to voters.
I just don't think we need it, to be honest with you. So, you know, right now, the council at any time, we could have made a motion last time. I actually would have made the motion. I was one of the no votes, but I think it's important for the whole city council to vote. If I had known that that was an option, I would have done it, to have everybody to vote because I think it's important and I would imagine most people here want a full council to vote. But nobody, at the time, nobody knew to do that. So I think it's more of, you know, a learning curve for the council members than it is changing an ordinance or a resolution.
So can we get a recap of what Dennison is going, what, if we did, if there was a motion made to have, to hit the pause button, what is Dennison looking into?
Whether or not less than the four can vote on to postpone a vote.
Because it's not a resolution or an ordinance, it's just a vote to postpone.
Okay.
Do you need four or could we say, could we change it to three?
Or just a majority?
Yeah, a majority.
Thank you for the discussion. Do you need a motion or some sort of closure on this?
We have a motion on the table to pass it as written.
You. That is correct. But then we also have a motion from Jen to amend it.
Amend the language.
Do you have a second on that?
I would second that.
Okay, so we'll vote on the motion. Roll call.
Wait. Are we voting on the amendment or the original motion?
We're voting on your amendment.
Okay.
Because we already approved the first.
Can you restate that, please? Yes, I'll reiterate that. I'll restate that. So there's one sentence in Part III, Section IV, that reads, in the event that a council member is absent, the mayor may postpone the hearing and/or vote until such a time that all members are present. I am proposing the following amendment that that sentence reads, in the event that a council member is absent, those members present may adopt a motion to postpone a vote until such time that all members are present and such a motion would require a simple majority to pass. And that is not currently the way, that is not currently allowed because of the four votes required.
That's not necessarily true.
And that's what Dennison's looking into, is that that might not apply to this because it's not an ordinance or a resolution.
It would be, the way our rules and procedures are written, it does state in there at least four votes for any ordinance, resolution, or anything to pass. So by changing this one section, you're saying that in this one instance, it's not required.
It's like, what Dennison has to look at is the paragraph we're looking at. If you read the whole paragraph, that's what he's going to handle.
And make sure it doesn't contradict with our charter. Because our charter is.
In the instance of voting to kick the can down to the next meeting, is what you're talking about? In that instance?
No. We're voting right now on that amendment. But Dennison, if we pass this, Dennison still needs to check to make sure we're not going to, that we're not passing something that will.
Maybe we should have his due diligence before we vote on it. Bring back to what you said earlier.
Right, so we could also have a motion to table it.
Yeah.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to table it.
I'll second it. All right. Roll call.
Yeah.
You made a motion.
Yes, and then Carrie, you seconded it.
I seconded it.
So that Dennison can do his due diligence research, get back to us. Then we can bring it back up in the next meeting. Look, we're doing it. We're doing it. We're doing what the, what the resolution.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right. So maybe we have a roll call on the. Battle?
To table.
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is a request for council to consent to appointing Judge Raphael. He does it to the four-year city judge term. And so, I don't believe any discussion is necessary. May I have a roll call on consent? Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. Following that is Resolution 3616, establishing city court judge and clerk's salary. This is another action item. May I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 3616, establishing the city court judge clerk's salary.
And I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? This is an item that was set during the budget negotiations. And the law requires that we set it by resolution. The document states that compensation will be at the rate of $47,000 per year plus retirement benefits with a requirement of a 29-hour work week. And any adjustments to salary will be reviewed during the annual budget review. And so.
And that's done on an annual basis? The review of salary? I'm assuming.
That the rate of pay will be $47,000 per year unless it's agreed to change the amount during the budget negotiations. But since the amount is set during the budget, there's not a lot of way of room for the rest of the time. So that's what council agreed to earlier in the year. And so that's what the, that's what the salary. And so is there any further discussion on that issue? The roll call. Battle?
Yes.
Daniel? Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is correspondence. If there is any, it will be in your packet. And with that, may I have a motion? Oh, yes.
Can I, I'm sorry, you flew through your business. I wanted to know, can I, I wanted to request that the mayor consider appointing a committee to figure out how this city can help with the lack of long-term rentals.
Thank you. That's a giant. And if you have any ideas or anything, you're more than welcome to bring them to, you know, if you have something that is a council issue, then you're welcome to bring it to council. And you're welcome to, you know, talk to me about it. And if we can put something together that has some deliverables, then, you know, I'm sure we'll get to do that. But I would want to know if the deliverables would be first, so. And with no further ado, do we have a?
I'd like to, I'd like to offer the new council members that have in the past. At scheduling, possibly, I would like to take you on what I call the infrastructure tour, which gives you a.
I have not been on the tour. I would also go on the tour for you.
You rent a bus?
Yeah, I rent a bus.
Four at the malls with my truck we have there, but I would, I would opt that again, but it's a matter of scheduling. And my schedule's hard to keep up with, but I would like to offer that we do that because it gives you a better sight when we start talking about things and projects coming and what we're doing. If you go get a firsthand sight of what we're talking about, you have a little more knowledge of the works of the infrastructure.
Jim, what about, like, prior to a council meeting? Since we're all, you know, presumably in town and around, and would that work for you? How long does this tour take?
I've had trouble in the past getting everybody at the same time and I try to, I like to do it once. I can do it twice if we can, but my schedule's. But I just want to say, if we want to start discussing that and trying to pick a schedule or pick a time that everyone, I would be more than happy to try and work that out. It's about a two-hour. Deal.
You're not going to get a part of your tour of Red Lodge. Then you're going to get with Jim.
So I want to opt that up to you and those of you. So I wanna opt that up to you, and those of you that didn't get on before, I'd be more than happy to try and accommodate and get you all on that.
Are there snacks?
I'll bring, I'll bring snacks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe we should, I can...
importantly, between you, it's gonna work with me, and like I said, it's a lot nicer on a nicer day, but I've done them on bad days too. But like I said, if we can coordinate a time that you're all, I mean, I could bring my personal vehicle, we can take six. But, and I would do that. But like I said, I really wanna opt that up, because I really think it's important that you see the infrastructure works that we work with, so that when these come up to the meeting, you have better understanding of what we're talking about.
I'll send the doodles all around.
What is the capacity of your pickup?
I can take six tomorrow.
But I do it again.
All right, is that it, Mary, we have a motion to adjourn, and we can...
I'm gonna grab a drink.
...deal later?
I second.
Can I get your, thank you all for coming.
Kelly, can you include Jan and still have him in on this?
We need a bus, thirty-six hours.
That would be fun, I can again, there's so much information.